Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Leamington Select Board Meeting for Thursday, November 20th. We will call this meeting to order at 7:02 and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
We will look for the approval of meeting minutes from last week, November 13th.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for 11:13, 2025.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor? Thank you. Now, the approval of warrants for Week 47. Payroll warrants 104 and 105 for $32,577.20 and the appropriations warrant number 107 for $433,174.04 for total warrants 104, 105, and 107, $465,751.24. My apologies, payroll warrant 104 and 105 was, yeah, the total. So, I probably said that, but gonna say it again.
I make a motion to approve payroll warrants 104 and 105 and appropriations warrant 107.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you very much. From the office hours, the Fire Chief and Acting Department of Public Works Director presented the budgets that he and the Town Manager worked on. We, it was a good two-hour discussion. We went over line by line. It was great. A lot of information. We have all the budget numbers that we've looked at so far for this, these departments. So, looking forward to, a lot of great work, by the way. Thank you very much for all the work, all the great discussion. So, very clear, timely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a great kickoff to budget season for us, so. The Select Board discussed the agenda for the regional EMS meeting that's coming up on Monday. And, hang on a minute. I'm just gonna look at something first. So, now's a good time to say that we're gonna be meeting Monday night here at 6:00. Is that in there?
It's in the notification too. You can say it twice.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just to let everybody know that the Select Board will be together Tuesday, Monday night, November 24th at 6:00 PM. Each Select Board received a community resilient self-evaluation as part of the Resilience Partnership Grant process. New York County Soil and Water Conservation District is acting as a service provider for this $75,000 grant. So, we'll be looking into that and putting our name in and hopefully getting some of those grant dollars. We'll be discussing that in the upcoming weeks. Department updates.
Well, we'll start with Public Works. Weekend ending November 15th. Road crew, highway crew worked Monday to clean up areas around town after the windstorm. Worked on Truck 5, the new plow truck, preparing it for the upcoming storm. Continued tree cleanup throughout the rest of the week. Treated the roads during the after, during and after the storm. Cleaned out Beaver Dam at Pine Hill again before snow. Worked on the MAC to prepare it for winter after it came back from getting its inspection and other work. Maintenance worked on an hour and a half on Saturday to help highway crew get trucks ready for the storm, the fleet maintenance. Buildings and ground started the week with completing emergency vehicle operations training. Went over plow root and truck, met with director to look at Tucker Road, Sistern, and form a plan for improvements. Cleaned out flower beds at Municipal Complex and prepared for them for winter. Cleaned up brush from dead tree at Coventry Fire Station. Replaced Municipal Complex bathroom fan, replaced several ceiling tiles throughout the building. Painted windows at Old Town Hall and salted plow root during storm. From the director. Monday morning, meeting with crew, welcomed new employee Paul Chapman, payroll and receipts. Met with Select Lady Ramsdale at Moimodeo Road to look at property damage done by Inabutter after a tree came down in windstorm.
Yeah, two in a butter.
Two in a butter, okay.
Yeah, I came across his fence, so, yeah.
Met with candidates on Monday. Official interview on Thursday. Spoke with Charlie from Allstate Paving to prepare for road review to make next year's paving list. Worked extensively with IT to set up emails and other online programs. Drafted several wintertime policies for employees and residents. Along with that, with the DPI, I was told that the, I think most of the, all the newly paved roads have the shoulders that have been done now. So, the shoulders were done by Allstate as well, so.
Nice job, too.
Yes, they came out very good.
We've seen a few of those roads. Haven't been around every single one of them yet, but, yeah, it's great work there on those shoulders for everybody.
Fire and EMS Weekly Update, November 15th. Number of calls this week, 20. Month of date, 31. Year-to-date, 664. Four of them are fire calls and 16 of them were EMS calls. The schedule was complete. Wednesday night was an officers' meeting followed by a department meeting. Maintenance conducted. Facility paramedic Rich Patinod continued work on bathroom update almost complete. Winter tires were purchased for A1. They will be installed on the ambulance over the next few weeks. Special note, month-to-date, we are one call behind last November. Year-to-date, we are seven calls behind last year. There were five requests for mutual aid, two EMS calls to Saukapi, one EMS call and fire call to Standish, and one EMS call to Limerick. Code enforcement, weekend ending 11:06. Let's see, four building permits, six electrical permits, two plumbing permits. Year-to-dates, 390 permits. Year-to-date total is $123,5161. He's been on 19 inspections in the past two weeks and has, he has sent out two expired notice of violations to the town's attorney to proceed to go to court. Parks and Rec. Current programs, before and after childcare at H.B. Emory, youth basketball, check Facebook, and open gym nights. The regular season begins in December. Pickleball, open play Tuesdays and Friday nights at H.B. Emory Gym. In December, pickleball will be changing to Monday and Friday nights. Join the Leamington Pickleball page on Facebook for updates. Coffee socials are Wednesdays at the Old Town Hall from 9:30 to 11:30. Open registration online at leamingtonrec.com. Before and after care, childcare programs at H.B. Emory. Call Jamie Warden with any questions about the program, 298-0869. More information and registrations are available on the website. Winter basketball registration for girls and boys in 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th grade is open. Our season will start in December and will go until March. Tomorrow, Friday, November 21st is the last day of registration. Winter basketball for 1st and 2nd graders will be Tuesday nights, 5:30 to 6:30 at H.B. Emory, starting in December. Complete schedule and registrations are available on our website. Play Days, all-day childcare, December 29th, 30th, and 31st from 7:00 to 5, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We will be making, taking a trip to Mr. Dew and his animals to Natural Science Center in Poland on Tuesday, November 30th, December, December 30th. Tuesday, December 30th. Registration and find further information about all programs at leamingtonrec.com. Other information about our first annual Festival of Trees event is out. We are looking for local businesses, families, organizations to participate in the event. December 12th, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. December 13th, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And December 14th, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You can find more information on the website at leamingtonrec.com. He received two more, so we currently have, I think, 23 Christmas trees.
Oh, wow.
So.
For the festival of trees?
Yeah, for the Festival of Trees. We're up to 23 of them now. So, it's good. Breakfast with Santa will be held at the Old Town Hall on Saturday, December 13th from 9:00 to 11:00. Full breakfast with Santa and checkout, ongoing Festival of Trees as well. No cost for the event, but donations are welcome. The, you'll be able to buy packets. They'll, I believe it's 10 tickets for $5.00. So, they're gonna be in packages of 10, so. The annual Community Thanksgiving Meal will be at the Old Town Hall this Saturday, November 22nd, 2nd, at 4:00 PM. Join us for a meal, request a pickup or delivery meal for those that need it. And we are also doing a food drive to help community members that are in need. Check out the event page on Facebook for more information. The rec bus is back and has a fresh new paint job. It did. It came out good. It's gray, nice and shiny, so.
It looks nice.
Yes, thank you to, oh, why am I, Phillips. Phillips Garage and Gorham painted it.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Phillips Auto Body. And that does it for the, please.
That looks like it. For department updates? I guess so. It is, but thank you. Town Manager Weekly Update?
Yep. Payroll and accounts payable were completed on time. I attended my first York County Town Managers Meeting. A part-time bookkeeper has signed her six-month employment agreement and is ready to start. Deputy clerk interviews are scheduled for the next two Mondays. We will be interviewing five applicants. I continue to work with Rick Lorello from Information Systems of Maine as part of the onboarding process. Rick has determined that several of our computers need to be replaced and that faster internet speeds are needed. The internet upgrade is scheduled to happen on December 17th. We were hoping it would be sooner, but I got confirmation on that date this morning. And on December 9th, I will be meeting with Spectrum to better understand the billing statements and to address some billing errors that have been discovered.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I would recommend we probably do the ECOMaine presentation now and then do public comment afterwards.
Yes, that's a good, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, so, why don't I step out and go have them come in?
And go take them, yes, thank you.
We have a presentation there.
We have ECOMaine that is coming in tonight to give us a presentation on recycling and costs and their plans for the future and, which include us because we're a town that's included in their plans for the future. So, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium, the mic, and stating your name and...
I'm Steve Kelly. Live on Staples Road. And, okay, I've been representative, representative of Leamington on the ECOMaine Board for about four years now. And I thought it would be a good time to talk about ECOMaine and what it does, what it continues to do, and what it plans to do in the future. So, I invited Kevin today to talk about that. Kevin is the Executive Director of ECOMaine. He's been there, I don't know how many years?
21.
21 years now. And I will say, before I, before I let him talk, is that I found ECOMaine to be very well managed. It's really an impressive facility. And if you ever get a chance, please visit it. It's, it's very impressive what they do. For that, I'll let Kevin talk.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kevin, is your card in there?
I have to look.
Thank you.
It isn't, but I have one.
Okay.
Thanks. And might there be others who would want background material?
I would, yeah. I'd deliver one right down to Bonnie right now.
And this is where you'd like me, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Steve, for setting this up. And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. It's, it's very important that we at ECOMaine stay connected to our communities. And in particular, it's very important for us to stay connected to our owners. And you, Leamington, is an owner community. So, you own us. I work for you. And, and I work for Steve, and he keeps me in line. And he's been a great board member over the years. The handout that I gave you, I'll be speaking from really two things. One is our annual report, which is the 2025, we're on a fiscal year, annual report. But more specifically, I, I didn't bring, I'm sorry, I didn't bring a slideshow. But I did bring the slide, the actual physical slides, because Steve suggested that it might be easier just to work from then. because Steve suggested that it might be easier just to work from then. So again, my name is Kevin Roach, and as Steve's mentioned, I've been there for twenty-one years. It was, it was really, it's been a great experience for me. I came from, I'm from Rochester, New York. We had a waste energy facility there. This is all I've done. Kind of traveled around earlier in my career and then settled not, not too far from here in Standish. And then about fifteen years ago, we moved to Thalmud. And so what I wanted to present to you today on this slideshow is really who is EcoMaine? Talk about our mission statement, our facilities and programs, the annual report, outreach and educational opportunities. I really want to talk to you about EPR, which EPR stands for Extended Producer Responsibility, which is a horrible acronym. I didn't make it up, but it is law in, in the state of Maine that will begin in January, 2025. And that's why it's so important to the town. What it, the acronym should really be more simply, how to pay for recycling instead of EPR. So how do we pay for recycling? And I think the town really needs to hone in on, on how to pay for recycling and improve recycling rates in the town of Leamington. And then perhaps our vision going forward. So on the second page, you will see who is EcoMaine. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We have sixty-nine member communities, twenty-seven of them are owners, and then the balance are on contract with the owners. Those contracts last anywhere between three and thirty years. So for example, some communities have chosen to become owners. Some communities have chosen to have a thirty, thirty-year relationship with us, and others have chosen a shorter-term relationship. We do have two communities in New Hampshire, but the remaining communities are in the state of Maine. We...
Kevin, when did Leamington opt to become an owner?
Of EcoMaine, you, you opted in in two thousand and six. The next page, which is page three, is our mission. And I think our mission actually is short, simple, but right to the point. And that is we provide comprehensive, long-term solid waste solutions in a safe, environmentally responsible, and economically sound manner in, as a leader in raising public awareness of sustainable waste management strategies. And it's that last little bit, I think, that sets us apart from many other waste organizations across the United States because of our connection to our communities and really the priority that we put on educating our consumers so that they participate in our programs and we minimize the amount of waste that we send to our landfill. On the right-hand side, you will see a hierarchy, which is the Waste Hierarchy, which is in Maine State statute. It is also guidance from the Environmental Protection Agency in Washington. And that is reduce, reuse, and recycle first, compost and digestion second, and then waste energy, and then the very bottom rung is landfilling. The idea here is to push the management of waste as high in the hierarchy as we possibly can. So really focus on the first three rungs of the hierarchy, which is reduce, reuse, and recycle. So the next page, which is page four, is a little bit on what we do. We have four facilities and programs that help us manage the waste. First, we have the Waste Energy Facility that processes about a hundred and seventy-five thousand tons of trash. And then we also have a recycling facility that processes thirty-five thousand tons of recyclables each and every year. In addition to that, we landfill some of the waste, but mostly the ash from the waste energy facility. So the waste energy facility is, is a boiler. It combusts the waste, it burns the waste, and then we reduce that waste by about ninety percent and then send the ash to our landfill, which is located in South Portland and Scarborough. And then on the right-hand side, a newer program, but not really that new. For the last eight years, we've been in partnership with Exeter Biofuels in Exeter, Maine. And what they do, which is, which is a really neat program, in partnership with us, is it's co-digestion. And that's where we mix our food waste that we collect from residents and businesses and grocery stores and things like that. They mix it with their agricultural waste. It's a dairy farm, so they have two thousand cows. And it goes into a digester, one of those three digesters that you see on the right-hand side there. The bugs do their thing, they eat the waste, they generate gas. The gas is converted to electricity, and the electricity is transferred out to the grid. So a really unique program that, that has lasted now, we're in our eighth year of doing that. So food waste is something that I'm going to talk about a little bit more in just a minute because that's real, where the real opportunity is. If you can imagine, if you have a large yard or you own some land, you're probably already recycling your food waste yourself, which is great. We don't want to stop that. But if you don't, and you have a smaller lot, and you're not able to compost on your own, on your own land, then recovering that food waste, food waste makes up about a third of the waste stream. So it's amazing how much food waste is generated, and we really want to recover that because for us, burning tomatoes and burning lettuce doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But putting food waste in a digester and letting the bugs do their thing to generate gas into electricity makes a whole lot more sense. And certainly putting food waste in a landfill makes no sense at all. As far as our certifications, this is our commitment to our communities, including Leamington. The first one on the left-hand side is ISO fourteen thousand and one certified. This is our environmental proof, our environmental certification, that we are operating at a very high level. It's an audit, very similar to a financial audit that you might be more familiar with. So we have auditors who come in, audit all our finance, I'm sorry, all of our environmental records, make sure that we're reporting everything, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And on the right-hand side is our ISO forty-five thousand and one. That's our safety certification. And I can't tell you enough, as, as, as the person who's responsible for running this organization, this safety certification is huge because the solid waste industry, people don't know this, but we are the fifth most dangerous industry to work in, ahead of police and fire. And behind working in the woods, but the fifth most dangerous. So it is a dangerous industry, and we got to keep it as safe as we possibly can. So this ISO forty-five thousand and one really keeps our safety programs operating at a very high level. On the next page is, is on page six. This gets into our annual report. On page seven is, is my message to the Board of Directors. And really, my message this year was all about growth. We saw tremendous growth in our organization. In the last twenty years that I've been there, this, our organization has grown from twenty-one communities to sixty-nine communities. So that's, that's, that's a huge growth. In this business, economy of scale makes all the difference. And so this is one of the best, really one of the best examples of regionalization that the state has, has to offer. And this year alone, we added nine new communities, of which seven of them are new owner communities. And I'll get that into, get into that in just a moment. The next page will show you a map, this is on page eight, of where all our sixty-nine member communities are. So you can see, you know, we really spread across mostly southern and into central Maine and of course, down east as well. On the right-hand side, you can see who our new communities are. These are owner communities that just bought into the organization as of July first, 2025. So this is really, you know, hot off the press news. That includes Buxton, Kenabunk, Kenabunkport, North Berwick, Old Orchard Beach, Sanford, Shapley, South Berwick, Topsum. Why are these communities joining? Because they know, they believe in regionalization, and they know that solid waste will be more efficient and better for the environment, and certainly better off financially speaking if we all work together instead of doing their own thing when it comes to solid waste management. Because not every community has their own landfill, not all of the community has their own waste energy plant, and not every community has their own recycling plant. So it really makes sense to regionalize these types of services. On the next page, you can see our Board of Directors, and you can see Steve Kelly is listed there from Leamington. And on the next page, that gets into our, our markets. And this is for markets for the sale of electricity from the waste energy plant. So there you can see on the left-hand side, we've seen, unfortunately, from a consumer level, you're seeing your rates for electricity increase, which is obviously unfortunate. We're on the other side, so we're selling the electricity. And you can see that the revenues are going up for us on, on the seller's side. We sell, we bid our electricity out, we sell to wholesalers. It's a competitive process, and basically it goes to the high bidder. On the right-hand side, you'll see where the revenue comes from as far as the recyclable material goes. So fifty percent of it on a tonnage basis is, is coming from cardboard. And on the bottom there, cardboard makes up about forty-one percent. But you can see all the other materials. Which interesting here is that if I, if you, if I was here, let's say, ten or fifteen years ago, ninety percent of what we processed at the recycling facilities was something that you probably have never heard of, and that's newspapers. That was predominantly the material that we, basically ninety percent of what we handled at the recycling facility. You, we can't find a newspaper now. So the, the, the mix of materials has really changed in, in my career. I've, I've been in the industry for thirty-four years, has really, has really changed from basically a newspaper pack to a packaging pack. So it's really all packaging. What's packaging? Packaging is boxes, plastic, metal, and glass containers, and, and very little paper. So on the next page, you can see eleven. I thought you'd be interested, okay, what, what happens to this recyclable material? This happens to be cardboard. So we have a single-sort recycling program that you participate in. I believe there's a drop-off, you have a drop-off facility here. And, and so the material comes to us, we sort and separate all of the recyclables, and then we sell those recyclables separately. So for example, here's the cardboard. So if anybody tells you or you hear any stories that, that we're throwing this stuff away, there's no way we can throw this stuff away when it has value. I mean, somebody would be crazy because not only would we be missing out on selling the product, but we'd also have to pay to dispose of it, the same rate that you're paying for your tipping fees to dispose of your waste. But you can see that it's a market-driven economy here. And you can see over the last year that cardboard has decreased almost thirty percent over the last twelve months. It, in, in my, you know, my career here, you know, it's cyclical. The markets go up and down, just like you see with your 401ks and your retirement portfolios. And you got to live through the lows and enjoy the highs. So the next page is mixed paper, not quite as nice of a story there. And the reason for this is this used to be the newspaper page. When we used to sell all of our newspapers to Main Mills, which was a great story. And they'd come right back to us as a newspaper. Not so anymore because there's no newspaper in the mix, as I mentioned earlier. It's mixed paper. What is it? It's junk mail. It's magazines, it's catalogs, and very little newspaper. So it's a mixed grade of paper, and the market really hasn't developed. It's improving, but it really hasn't developed yet. And that's why you see the values aren't very strong. We had a couple, we had a good, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, in October twenty-four, we had a real good year. But since then, it's been quite depressed on the mixed paper side.
Can you just tell us why it's improving?
Why it's improved? Oh, do you have...
You said it was improving, and didn't you just say that the market for mixed paper was improving?
Um, no, well, for mixed paper, it's actually gone down. For, for mixed paper, it's actually gone down, and it's been a depressed market for mixed paper because the newspapers aren't in there anymore.
I just thought you would also say it was improving.
Well, on the, on the cardboard side, we've, we've had a pretty good market. And, and really, the market's been very strong because the demand for packaging. Everything you get now is in a cardboard box. They're making cardboard boxes from recycled cardboard. And so they need that cardboard to make boxes. And then you can see where metal's been, that's been a pretty stable market. The top bar there is aluminum, and the bottom bar there is your steel and metal cans, your, your cans of corn and green beans and things like that. And so you can see there, there's a delta between the two, aluminum and certainly steel cans. But both of those markets have been pretty steady over the last year. And then plastics. So that plastics gets a pretty bad rap out there. But you can see that the top line there is, is your plastic high-density polyethylene. What's that? That's, if you buy gallon jugs of milk or you buy gallon jugs of water, that's in a high-density polyethylene jug. It's kind of a cloudy white jug. That has pretty good value, sometimes even as high as aluminum. So that material would never go to the landfill because it's just too valuable. When we bale this material up, the bales weigh about a ton each. We put twenty-eight bales on a truck and ship it off. A lot of that material goes to York, Pennsylvania, to a company that makes new bottles out of the old bottles for Lever Brothers. So it's, it's a very sound market. The next market there is, is there in the red. That's the number-one containers, that's your PET. That's going to be your water bottles and your soda bottles, and probably that cup right there that you have before you. So that's going to be your clear plastic, not as valuable, but certainly still has value. And then the other one is the, the brown bar, is the colored high-density polyethylene. So very similar to the milk jugs, but these are the laundry detergent, the detergent bottles, the shampoo bottles. They're all different colors. The reason why that's not as valuable is because of the color. They, they have to make that into a black product, oil bottles. And whereas the natural, they can make into any color they want. So that's the value difference there. We have on the next page, on page fifteen, you own a part of the landfill that's located in South Portland and Scarborough. It's at that landfill that we landfill the waste and the ash material. It's also at that facility that we recover the metal. So if you don't recycle metal, or you put something that is a ferrous, a ferrous type of metal in, in your trash, we're actually pulling it out. We use a magnet to pull out the metals, and we recover that metal and send it to a recycler. So even, even for those who may not be enthusiastic about recycling, we're still getting a little bit out of you because we're pulling that metal out of the waste stream for you, and you probably don't even know it. Last year, we were awarded a two-million-dollar grant to promote recycling in multifamily dwellings. Multifamily dwellings have not been as easy to implement recycling programs than your traditional single-family homes that have a curb. So if you have a building that has six, eight, ten, fifteen, a hundred units in it, it's just harder, it's more complicated. And so we're putting, we're making a huge investment in trying to get recyclables recovered, not just at the single-family households, but also at the multifamily dwellings that are scattered across our, our region. So the next page is page seventeen, and this is the, the item that I really wanted to highlight with you. And Steve really asked me to talk about. And that's the Extended Producer Responsibility Law, or EPR. Or, if you can just think of it this way, how do we pay for recycling? So municipalities historically have been on the hook for paying for residential recycling. They have been responsible, since I've been in the business for the last, you know, thirty-plus years, they've been responsible for the collection of the recyclable materials, for the processing of the recyclable materials, the baling of the recyclable materials, and the shipment to, to market. This law basically, which was passed in 2021, this law basically shifts the costs, or shifts the burden of the cost of recycling from the municipalities or the taxpayers back onto the brands who are producing the packaging in the first place. So it's still going to be a shared responsibility because it's not all-encompassing. And remember this, it only includes packaging. So again, it's your boxes and your plastic metal and glass containers, which is most of what we're collecting in our recycling programs. It does not include any newspapers that happens to be out there. It does not include magazines, junk mail, or non-packaging recyclable materials. Excuse me. So what this law does is it looks, it asks municipalities to, to track their costs very closely. And this is going to be kind of the town's responsibility to track your costs associated with recycling. And then you turn those costs over to the state, or that really, it's going to be the state's authority that's going to manage this program, just like the bottle bill. When you return a container, the bottle bill actually is a form of Extended Producer Responsibility. And there's an agency that manages the bottle bill and, and basically divvies up the nickels and manages that whole effort. There's going to be a stewardship organization that's going to manage this for the state. The stewardship organization right now, or as of January first, 2026, is going to start collecting fees from the brands for the packaging that they bring into the state of Maine. There's going to be a... There's gonna be a fund set up, this, these fees will go into the fund, and then as municipalities, um, submit their costs associated with recycling, that fund will reimburse municipalities for their recycling efforts. The important thing here is it only includes recycling and it only includes packaging. It does not include waste. So that is why it's so important for the town, because you, otherwise you'll be leaving a whole lot of money on the table. Because you're paying for the garbage collection, you're paying for the waste disposal, right now, that, that's on your backs. Um, you can shift those costs, you have an opportunity to shift those costs from the waste side over to the recycling side, but only if your, your residents recycle. And the way you get them to recycle is you make a recycling program as equally convenient as trash disposal. Otherwise, you'll never get a good recycling rate. We have communities that are recycling fifty percent of the waste stream, and we have communities that are recycling two percent of the waste stream. So it is, there's a huge variance. And it all mostly has to do with the convenience of the program and the outreach, you know, the know-how, um, to participate in the programs. We can help you with that latter effort, we can help you with the outreach. Um, I'll get into the outreach in, in just a minute. So that's basically how the Extended Producer Responsibility works. Now, a lot of people are saying, okay, this is a new program. Um, with any new program, there's gonna be a lot of growing pains, I'm sure. And remember, this isn't my program, I'm just following the law, the law that was passed. Um, I do support the program because I think it's a game changer, and that's why I put up on the top of this, this slide. Recycling, this is gonna be a game changer for Maine communities because it's really gonna encourage brands to package their goods in readily recyclable materials, otherwise they're gonna pay more. And it's going to encourage municipalities to offer the best, most convenient recycling program that they can so that their, their residents participate, so that they can enjoy the savings associated with what this program brings. You can see that it's gaining traction. So you can see seven states have actually passed on page eighteen, um, uh, EPR laws. Um, and ten states have introduced EPR legislation. So, you know, there is momentum coming here, and it really, I think, is going to continue because it really shifts that cost and the burden on municipalities and shares the cost of recycling with the producers who are producing the packaging in the first place. So just to leave, um, EPR for a moment, um, and if you do have any questions, I'm happy to take them. Um, I'm gonna get back to EPR when I discuss your specific tonnage in, in just a few slides. Powered by the People, this is again in the annual report, I wanted to put it in my slideshow. One of the things I think that you will appreciate, and I think is really cool about EcoMaine, is that at the Waste Energy Facility, um, we have a lot of licensed, certified people who work there, they're boiler operators. Where do we get our boiler operators? Maine Maritime. So we have a intern program with Maine Maritime where we get those folks, um, and they can either go out to sea, or if they want a shoreside job, they can come to a power plant like ours. And we get them into our plant, they work two years as an intern, and then we try to grab them, keep them here in Maine, um, after they spent two internships with us. So some of these folks, um, such as Mike Verrell, he's a Maine Maritime grad, um, and he came to us in, in nineteen ninety. So these are good jobs, um, and, and we're able to keep these folks right here in Maine. Um, and it's something that I think is important to, to our member communities. Um, on the next page, we, I introduce something that is being constructed as we speak, that's on page twenty, and that is the new MRF. What the heck is a MRF? A MRF is a Materials Recovery Facility. We have the old recycling facility, which as I mentioned earlier, was at twenty years ago when we built that, was a newspaper-based system, when ninety percent of the recyclables that were coming in were, were recycling newspaper. The system doesn't really work anymore because it was meant to recycle, uh, pull out newspapers. And so we have invested in a new facility right across the street on Blueberry Road from the old facility, right parallel to the main turnpike, um, in the city of Portland. And this facility's gonna offer us more capacity because we have more communities, better quality sorting, um, more education opportunities, it's obviously gonna have modern technology, and it's going to be, enable EcoMaine to even entertain more member communities coming on with us. Um, a little bit more on the new facility on page twenty-one. Um, on the upper right-hand corner there, you can see that this is gonna grow our capacity. Right now, we're processing about fifteen tons per hour. This'll allow us to process twenty-five tons per hour or fifty thousand tons per year. So we're really focused on the economy of scale that this program will bring. On the next page, you will see actually what the facility looks like. And this is actually a facility, um, it's an existing facility. Um, it was the Sturbridge Yankee Warehouse that was located again right across the street from our existing facility. Um, and we're transforming that facility, putting that equipment in that you see. There's a tipping floor there on the right-hand side where the trucks will tip the material, the single sort material. It'll all be sorted and separated and processed, and then once it's separated, it'll be baled and then out for shipment. On the next page-
Yeah, and how does the optical sortation work?
Yep, and that's right here on the next page, so the optical sorter. So that is infrared technology that uses optical scanning to scan what's on the conveyor belt. So these conveyor belts basically spread the material out so that it's singulated, so that there, there, there's not a foot of material on the belt. Um, and then identifies whatever it is that you program the optical sorter to sort. So you can program these optical sorters to sort anything you want. So if you program them to sort, uh, the PET container that you have in front of you, um, we can program it to sort that. Once it identifies where it is on the conveyor belt, it uses air, chh, to sort it. So it pops it out and puts it in the correct bin, basically steers it to the correct bin. So a human being, which, um, you know, if a human is sorting, which is what the industry has basically been doing over the last thirty years, um, a human can sort about twenty-five to thirty picks per minute, i- if you're not getting sleepy and, and, and you're working hard. Um, so, so think about it, thirty-five picks per minute versus optical sortation, which can do eleven hundred to twelve hundred picks per minute. So it's gonna be a whole lot faster, and that's really where the industry has moved, is to optical sortation. So this facility should be, uh, is already started, it should be done, uh, a year from now. Um, and we'll be able to move right across the street without any interruption in our recycling program. On the next page, you can see, um, we wanna be present in our schools, so we try to say that we're everywhere, but we're especially focused on, in, in being in the schools. We gotta get our kids to take this home, um, so that they're asking their families and their family members to participate in our, in our recycling and recovery programs. Um, and now, the next step even into our food waste programs as well. So on, on page twenty-five, that's how you can stay connected with us, um, through the school programs. On the next page, you'll see a little bit more specifically, um, I wanted to talk about Limington, your town. So on page twenty-seven, you can see on the left-hand side, your current recycling rate. So your current recycling rate is five percent. Why? Why is it this so low, when other communities are able to recycle forty to fifty percent? Well, it's because you have very convenient curbside trash pickup and very inconvenient drop-off recycling. The industry will tell you, you know, all the time that the, that your recycling program has to be as convenient as trash disposal. And if it's not, you're not gonna get the participation. People do want to recycle, they like to be a problem solver themselves. They wanna be a part of not landfilling our waste for future generations to deal with. And so, you know, what we have found over the last thirty years is people will recycle, but it's gotta be convenient. And that's where, that's where I think the challenge is. So on the right-hand side, if you go to our average, and this is only our average, if you recycled a third of your waste stream, you can see what happens to the tonnage. No longer are you only recycling seventy-nine tons, but you're actually picking that up to five hundred and sixty-eight tons. And maybe you can even do beyond that. But the beauty of how this fits into EPR is that five hundred and sixty-eight tons that you could be collecting and, and, and recovering, that is a reimbursement, you are eligible for reimbursement for the cost associated for recovering that material. If you leave it in solid waste, you won't be eligible. So if you're comparing yourselves to a neighboring community, if a neighboring community, let's say Hollis, um, or Buxton, or Saco, or whatever the neighboring community is, if they're offering curbside recycling and they have a thirty-three or a forty percent recycling rate, they are recovering, they are eligible for a much greater proportion of collection costs, processing costs, and baling costs at our facility. The other thing that's EPR also allows for is it allows municipalities to get reimbursed for investments that are made in recycling. So you, as an owner community, are part of the investment that we're making in our new recycling facility. That debt service that we are going to pay on that facility is eligible for reimbursement. That is why we are increasing, we always used to have recycling as free. We put the tipping fee on, on trash, on trash, and then we make recycling free, even though there was a cost to process recyclable materials. But, but recycling markets have matured, recycling programs have matured, and this program basically says, you can only, you're only eligible to recover your costs if it's a cost. So if you hide the cost, there's no cost being recorded, you're not eligible for reimbursement. So that is why we're ramping up the tipping fee associated with recycling. That's gonna be next year, the same tipping fee that you're paying for trash. Um, it, it's not, you know, I'd love to make it free, I'd like to keep incentivizing recycling, but it's still gonna happen because you're gonna be eligible for that reimbursement. And the only way we're gonna get reimbursement for this investment that we're making together is, um, is to recognize the cost and then recognize that we have to ask for a reimbursement. So, um, so I just wanted to, I, I wanted to kinda end with, or almost end with that slide because this is where, to me, the rubber really meets the road. This is where I think, um, you know, I think the town should take action because you have an opportunity, um, to change the way you're doing business here in the town and to start to collect, um, uh, the reimbursements back. Now, you're gonna ask me an next question, well, how much? It's a new program, I don't know how much. I can give you a, a general, uh, my general opinion. Um, but the bottom line is that a portion of your recycling costs associated with packaging, there's gonna be a fund available, you can go after that fund, or you can leave it to the, for the other towns to go after that fund. But it's gonna be there, and, um, I would encourage you to make sure that you're capitalizing as much as you possibly can on those reimbursements by making recycling as convenient as you possibly can. That's my message to you. I have no skin in the game. Um, you know, if the town wants to keep doing what they're doing, that, that's fine. Um, but I think you're shortchanging the town by doing that, and the residents, I feel, will participate in this program. Not everybody, you're gonna have people out there, no way, I'm not gonna recycle. But in most of our communities, we're seeing, the, the majority of people want to recycle. They just want it, the program to be convenient. So that's the, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
The communities that have been in this, have this, this new way-
Yep.
Is, is, I'm assuming there's some communities that have been in it for a few years, number of years?
So to answer your question, the program hasn't, won't start until-
So this is a new program in the United States?
Uh, no, in Maine.
Okay, what I'm getting at is other communities in other states have this type of program.
Yes.
What are the, what are the percentages that these other states are seeing? The only reason, the only question I have here is, we put thousands and thousands of dollars forth. Is it worth the, the return? That, that's the big question here, and I think that's gonna be everybody's big question. But I mean, I wouldn't want the townspeople to put out thousands of dollars to get recycling to that point and where we, we save them a thousand bucks and we put out twenty thousand, you see what I'm saying? It's so, it's a lot of, if we, I think, for us, we could get more people on board if we had an actual rough idea of where these people can save. Cause like her reaction, I think, is gonna be the same reaction to a lot of the townsfolk, that the tonnage is gonna be the same. Now, can we bring, how much are we gonna be able to save back, is gonna be everybody's question.
Right. So on page eighteen, that, that'll give you a sense, um, of the map across the country of where these programs, of where legislation is passed. Um, to your point, this is a new program across the country. Oregon has already started their program, but they're in their first year, so there's no data, so, so the data's not available. Um, what I will say is that the communities, many of our communities, our sixty-nine member communities, many of them have been recycling for twenty, twenty-five years, they just haven't had the reimbursement. They were paying for the program themselves. So, um, so, so the programs, the recycling programs have been established for a long period of time. The reimbursements to this program have not been available until now.
Right, right.
So you, you can wait, you can wait, but the downside, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand that-
I'm just asking this because we're gonna be asked the question.
You, you are. Um, the downside of waiting is, it, you know, if, if this program is successful, which from a professional standpoint, I believe it will be, there's been a lot of thought into it, we're gonna have growing pains, but there's gonna be a fund. And so, I believe you might as well tap into that fund as quickly as possible because otherwise you're paying for it on the garbage side. So even, even if it's half of what I'm proposing here, half of, you know, half of something, you're still better off. Um, and so I feel like communities that have a very poor recycling rate are the ones who are gonna be paying the most for trash disposal. Because if you have a good recycling rate, if you're another town and you got a fifty, you know, forty, fifty percent recycling rate, you're getting a whole lot of reimbursements from that program that Limington isn't gonna be able to be eligible for. And, and you can wait and see, and, and that's, that's not a problem either, but you're, I believe you're leaving money on the table by doing that.
So we're gonna be, the tonnage is gonna increase for two thousand and twenty-six, so we'll be paying extra all next year.
Yep.
And the reimbursement-
Uh, July, July of two thousand and twenty-six.
But the reimbursements won't begin until-
You won't, so the, so your, the costs, you should be, start tracking July first, two thousand and twenty-six. Those costs, one of the downsides of this program is you first, first have to fund the program, which they're gonna do calendar year two thousand and twenty-six, they're gonna basically put the money in. And then in two thousand and twenty-seven, um, you will submit your cost, your recycling costs. And then in October of two thousand and twenty-seven, that's when the state will return the reimbursements to the towns.
Once a year.
Yep, once a year.
In October of two thousand and twenty-seven.
Yep, so you, basically you gotta wait for your money for a year.
But we're gonna have to pay tonnage for that year.
And we're gonna have to pay to, to ramp up a program to help recycle more.
Yeah, so the tipping costs, the tipping costs that you're gonna increase to one seventy-five for recycling?
Uh, one ten-
Oh, sorry.
One ten.
One ten for recycling. Um, charged to the town, sorry.
Wouldn't be here.
That's charged to the town for tonnage, one ten, right? That is your cost at EcoMaine, right, that you're gonna turn in for reimbursement back to EcoMaine, does not go back to the community?
We, I run EcoMaine, we are the communities, but as, as a regional, uh, organization, we are not eligible for reimbursements. You are.
So where does the reimbursement from, do you turn in?
We're gonna charge you, so two things, and this is a good question.
As well as the producers?
You're, you're gonna have to, you're gonna get billed by your hauler.
Yep.
Okay, and if you're, if it's recycling, that is eligible for reimbursement. So you would turn that bill in. And then the bill that I charge you, that I send you for processing recycled material, you'll turn that in. It's as easy as that, you got two bills for recycling. You got your collection, your hauler bill, and you've got the bill that EcoMaine is charging you.
So essentially, we're not completely out of the program because you're gonna charge us for recycling that we can turn into the state for reimbursement?
We're gonna charge, we already charge you.
I know, but that bill that you charge us for the one ten on recycling, we can turn that into the, the state for-
That's right.
Okay.
That's right, so in, in the case that I'm, you have in front of you, so, you, you, the, the bill that you have now is seventy-nine for seventy-nine tons.
Yep.
I say, you know, so times that, times a hundred and ten dollars, or, that's my point. You know, so times that, times a hundred and ten dollars, or, that's my point, you can turn in that bill for five hundred and sixty-nine tons.
Yep.
And so our contractor right now that we put our recyclables in...
It costs us sixty thousand dollars.
But we can put in, and so they do cans now, and they do all of these recyclables there now. We're hoping to increase that number that's going to EcoMaine.
Now, we purchase a truck to haul our own roll-offs. That's a reimbursement.
For a...
People, we pay to haul it to, so we as a town decide to buy a uni truck, and we haul our own roll-offs. Now, I can claim the roll-off truck, our containers, our, our, everything to do with this recycling is the way I understand it.
No.
Okay, so then it's not pushing us to do anything other than say...
It's going to be the tonnage cost that we're saving by dropping it off? Or collecting here to be picked up?
To get...
Is it just tonnage?
So what you would do, Buxton is going through this too. What you would do is you would get, you would ask your hauler to give you a cost to not only pick up curbside recycling, but to pick up curbs, or curbside trash, but also add curbside recycling to the collection.
Yeah, we don't, we don't put out trash cans for, like, our, our town people put their own trash out.
Right.
But I think the point you're trying to make is if you don't make it convenient for residents...
It's got to be just like trash. So they put their trash can out at the end of the curb, they got to put the recycling bin at the end of the curb.
Yeah, so we would need two trucks, one for trash, one for recycling.
If we as the town, if we as the town decide to be the recycler, we purchase the truck, we are now the transporter. We go curbside ourselves and pick up all the recycling at the trash places. Is this funds that we put towards this recycling effort available for refunds? You see what I'm saying? Instead of paying this...
Like startup costs.
Yeah, I mean, instead of paying a company to tow this stuff and pick it up, why wouldn't I make the investment as the town to pick it up ourselves? Because in the long run, the investments, it's going to pay itself off. Rather than us paying somebody else, then it's going to, in three to five years, our equipment's going to be paid off, and it's going to be cheaper for the town. Are we eligible for reimbursements on that stuff?
You're eligible for a portion of your recycling costs. And the reason why I say portion is what the law says, is it only applies to recycling, and it only applies to packaging. So that's why I can never say that this is going to cover all your costs, because it's only a portion. But what I can tell you is, when we're selling the material, most of the material we are selling is packaging. It's boxes, and it's plastic, metal, and glass containers. So, and that's only increasing. So it's, it's going to be most, but it's only, it's only a portion. To answer your question, yes, that is, Portland, the city of Portland is the only one who has their own collection fleet. And they have that because they have the density. So what you're going to be faced with is, a lot of these haulers oftentimes can do it cheaper because they haul not only in Limmington, but they have another truck who hauls in, you know, in Hollis, and Buxton, and all these other towns. I don't know that you have enough business in Limmington to make it, because if you buy a truck, then you're going to have to have backup, so now you need two trucks. And I have known no other town this size who does it themselves for that reason, because you run the numbers. And I think what you'll find is that bidding it out to a private contractor is probably going to save you more money, and this law does not allow you to be inefficient. You have to, they collect all this information, and if it costs you because you're doing it on your own, if it costs you, and collection costs are high, if it costs the town of Limmington four hundred dollars to collect recyclable materials, and it costs Buxton three hundred dollars to collect recyclable materials, then you're on the hook because you're not doing it as efficiently as a town over. Because they don't want inefficient programs.
What do you mean on the hook? You mean they, it's a...
We would get less reimbursement.
You get less reimbursement because you're not, you're not, what they're going to do is they're going to take all the like towns that are similar, and they're going to take the mean costs. And if you're an outlier, and you have a big cost, then you're not going to get the full reimbursement that some others. So, you know, this could happen even with private contractors. But I'm just telling you my experience in this industry. Small towns are at a disadvantage because you don't have the density. And so now you have a truck that's sitting around, and, you know, what's it going to do on Friday when you're done with your routes? Trucks can't, you know, as you know, trucks can't sit around, they're meant to roll, and they got to roll six days a week. Otherwise, you're losing money.
He has plans for a roller.
Yeah, I mean, they sell trucks that do roll-offs, you put a, it, dump the roll-off off, you load a dump truck body on it, a flatbed, I mean, there's multi-use trucks. And we've looked into this in the few, in the past here, but I'm just...
I mean, if you have enough business, that's, that's your thing.
Easiest way to push more recycling is give the people the easiest way. And that's put a container at their house and say, here, when you drag that up, can you please do this for us, and we can save money? But I don't think, I don't think hiring Melons is going to be cost-effective. You know, we pay three hundred thousand dollars a year for our curbside trash. I can't see it being much less than that to come back around for recycling, because you're doubling the...
Right, well, what, but what Buxton is doing is, they're, they're transitioning from just curbside trash, and now that they are going to, and to your point, it's one truck that has two compartments. So every resident has two carts, two cans or two carts. One for recycling, one for trash. And the truck comes, same truck picks up six seconds, doesn't get out of the truck, the driver doesn't get out of the truck, dumps the trash, puts the container down, dumps the, pulls the level, dumps the recyclables, that goes in the other side of the truck. And then both sides are compacted.
That would require our contract to have the, that type of truck.
That's right.
So, at which, we know they go for about three hundred thousand, and I don't think he's going to buy new trucks to do a program like that.
Well, that's why they would, most haulers serve more than one town.
Yeah, our hauler does, serves more than one town. But it's one trash, one, as far as I know, it's not separated.
So it's time to look at all the haulers.
Yeah. If we want to do this program, or try to make it easier for people to...
I'd like to know, it's not, I'd like to know what the cost is. You know, absolutely, I'm all for recycling.
Yeah.
I just think, you know, look what happened when the container got put out here in the driveway.
Yeah, our container used to be here in the driveway.
And everybody was too lazy to go to the dump, they just throw the trash in it. So it was almost useless at that point. So it's also what we're dealing with as well. I think the easiest way is to, you know, I lived in Gorham, we had a blue bucket, and we had to separate all of our...
I lived in California, you had to separate everything.
Yeah, yeah, you put it out there, and I mean, I'm all for it. I just think, for us, it's going to, the tonnage difference...
But there, like in California, you have all your buckets, you have your separate trucks, and...
Yeah.
The density, so...
That's it, the biggest thing out here is getting the dual trucks. Even if we wanted to do curbside. But I, I get what you're saying, trying to...
I mean, we can always reach out to Melon and Sons and see if they have that type of truck.
Open the transfer station up to no passes, and try to monitor the trash side of it better, just so to get more recycling in there. I really, it's definitely something we're going to have to look into. Because it's going up. That's all there is to it. It's going up, so we're going to have to either...
The question is how are we going to react to it?
Yeah, exactly. So, I appreciate, yeah. So none of these communities have been in it for more than, they haven't gotten into the reimbursement? Not just communities, in the...
Nobody has gotten a reimbursement.
Okay, that's, yeah, so there's nothing to guide this off. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just really curious to know where the, the actual return, the percentage on the return is, that's, it'd be really good to find out.
I'd be interested if we were to get a recycling program on the ground again, how much that would offset the new tonnage fees?
The only way to do it is try to, would try to push it.
And really, the only way you're going to really move the needle is curbside.
Curbside, yeah.
So if you want to move the needle, that's the fastest way to moving the needle.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, I think the residents will, will comply with, with the program that you put in front of them.
I mean, we got to show them value in it, first of all, to actually recycle, so. And then obviously make it easy.
Yep. The communities that have, there are some communities that, you know, have drop-off recycling, but they also have drop, they have high recycling rates, but they also force you to drop off your trash. So again, it's parallel, it's just as convenient, if you, like Standish. Standish has a transfer station, I used to live in Standish. You have to go into the transfer station anyway for your trash, so why not do recycling? I don't advise that, but we've been trying to get Standish on board with, with curbside as well, because, you know, the transfer station can only handle so much business. And then, you know, eventually, it's just, you know, you're sitting in line for fifteen minutes trying to dump your trash.
That would be here. I think I said, like, when you were here last, building a new place, so.
Yep.
We're here to help.
Build a facility out here in Limmington?
We really appreciate this, and it's good, hopefully we had a full board of people watching tonight to hear it. And if not, they can go back on and, and listen to it, because you explained it very...
This will be posted with the meeting minutes online.
Great. I can send you an electronic copy if it's easier, or whichever's easier.
I can scan and put it on.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I won't talk in my home, but if you could just say, is the, are the numbers for what all the towns do in terms of recycling, it reported that we do five percent? Is that online on your website?
Yes, it is.
Could you just speak into the microphone and say that?
Yeah, you can, you can go to our website, and you can see everybody's tons, and what the different communities are recycling. Always know that there's always different circumstances in every town that may weigh the numbers one way or the other. So it's, it's an indicator, but you do have to look at the variables that go into the data.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. A lot of great information.
And he brought recycling.
And, yes, I do, I do have, can I pass out water bottles?
Yeah. You're a guest in our home.
These are made from recycled aluminum.
Wow, nice.
And this will keep you, this will keep us in mind, you have in mind with us.
Can I get one for my video guy?
Every time you drink.
Thank you.
Every time you drink.
I'm drinking now.
You'll be thinking about...
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Can I say one thing?
Absolutely, please.
You know, I would suggest you go talk to Melon, and see if there's an option for them to have...
Yeah, that'd be the first, first call, would we have to find out with them?
Once you find that out, then you could see what the cost of getting recycled containers for...
Because that cost, that cost to us, because if, if Melon were able to accommodate, right? They would obviously charge us the recycling tonnage that we would then turn around back to this program?
We, just like, just like trash, we charge you for trash, we charge you for recycling. And the board determines what that rate is.
And then Melon just charges for delivery pickup?
He's just doing pickup and hauling?
Yeah. Tonnage comes from...
I was just trying to figure out how they knew what, I'm pretty sure they probably say this is coming from Limmington.
Yes, they do.
And that's how it's calculating our less than five percent for recycling?
Yeah, because of the slips.
The slips, okay.
For the trucks with the tonnage on the trucks is right there.
The slips we don't see.
Kevin, could you give us a timeline, please? I know that this starts July first.
So, you could have asked the board member, he's very informative.
The, the, the EPR program you're asking about?
Yes.
So the EPR program actually begins January first, 2026.
January first.
Yeah, like a month and a half away. So that's when the program begins, and the way it begins is that's when they're collecting the fees from the brands, and they're asking municipalities to start tracking your recycling costs. So right now, in, just starting January first, start tracking your recycling program costs, because you have a container, and that hauling cost is something that you should track. Right now, we're charging you eighty-five dollars a ton to process those recyclable materials. We have that, all you have to do is ask us what the annual charges, if you're not keeping track. And we have that, and those two bills are what you're going to submit, because that's all you have right now. That's what you're going to submit to the stewardship organization for reimbursement.
Starting in July?
No, January of twenty-seven.
January twenty, twenty-seven, you got it.
So we have to, we have to track it for a year?
Yep.
But the tonnage increases July first.
The rates, yes, the rates do increase.
That goes up to one-ten?
That goes up to one-ten dot point seventy-five.
You don't need the seventy-five cents.
And that's going up from eighty-five?
From eighty-five.
From eighty-five on recycling, but it's only a three percent increase on trash.
But we pay, we don't pay the whole thing for recycling until July?
Right.
Correct.
July, eighty-five will go to one-ten. Yep.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Oh, wow, there's a lot of moving parts.
I was going to say, I don't know if Kevin made it clear, but only towns can apply for the funding from EPR.
Yes, that's why I was asking about the tonnage, like...
But it's not, EcoMaine doesn't do it. All EcoMaine does is gives us the tonnage that we recycled, and then we add it to our other expenses. So if that wasn't clear, that's, I wanted to make that clear.
No, I just, we needed to know the dates of what do we, when do we start, and what do we do?
Yeah, I, as he said, January first, so at that point, I would just track all your costs related to recycling.
Okay.
Because when they look at your figures, I think the date that I heard last, yesterday I attended a Zoom call about the program.
Okay.
And in that call, I don't know if you're aware of this, but they were saying that the reports would be due from the municipalities by March of 2027 for the year twenty-six. And then you'd receive compensation for whatever...
By October.
By October of that same year.
Will they be sending out notifications to the towns that are participating?
I, I assume they will, but one of the things too is that the, the, the folks, DEP is not running the program, except overall guidance. They're going to be hiring a company, yet determined, they figure it'll be January when they'll announce that. And that company will be doing all the machinations to get to the cost of portioning. And I assume that that company will be sending out notices to the municipalities.
Forms to fill out.
Forms.
Yeah, whatever, right.
Requirements.
Like the IOD for the bottle bill.
But the, the, the reporting that you'll need for recycling, you'll have to keep a separate tally for that, you don't want to mix that with the waste at all. So, and then, you know, I would say, I was suggesting when we met last time, is get the silver bullet out here, I know that the concerns are, and I know we're going to see it. But it's, it's just another way to increase our recycling rates, and increase our compensation back in, or remuneration back in October twenty-twenty-seven. But I know it's a pain in the neck. And the other thing is, we, I think you said the silver bullet at the transfer station is full right now. Let's get it hauled out after January first. And, and, because it's all cost...
I like the way you're thinking.
Yeah, but get it, let's get it hauled out, it's been there for, as long as I've been going to the transfer station, I remember looking at it. But I know there's going to be a problem, and I know there's going to be waste in it, but we'll just have to deal with that. And if it becomes overwhelming, we can always pull it back.
So we have a recycling roll-off already?
Yeah.
They call it a silver bullet because it's silver?
Right.
But it used to be out here.
Now it's painted, but, yeah, it's full of stuff, so let's get it, let's get it to them. And I know we said our hauler won't do it, well, let's get another hauler, somebody will want to do it.
Is that the issue, the hauler won't take it?
Yeah, that's why he keeps talking about getting a truck.
Well, it's a dual, I mean...
It's a dual-purpose truck.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to have a truck, and people whine about hauling, we haul ourselves.
Isn't that part of the contract with the hauler, to haul the recycling too?
You know, Waterboro has their own truck, you could ask them to haul it for you.
Well, no, it's, I've been, we've been looking at, because these trucks now, you can drop, you can haul, roll-off, you can drop it, you can put a sander on it, use it for a plow truck. Summertime, you can put a dump body on it, it all little attachments. But it's a uni, it's pretty, it's a cost-effective way to have a lot of things to do with one truck.
Yes.
Especially with the break that our haulers are going up, so, just saying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Now we'll go to public.
Public comment.
Hi, Sherri Beatty from Seventeen Sandville Road in Limmington. I have a question, I was viewing one of your meetings online, and you were talking about something happening with the Old Town Hall, December fifth, about something being removed. Could you please elaborate that?
Yes, we are going to have, they're going, there's, the old podium that's up there at the Old Town Hall that Select Board used to use at town meetings, is taking up floor space that could be utilized for the aftercare program and the programs...
Um, is taking up floor space that could be utilized for the aftercare program and the programs that it's being used for now in that community building. It will open up space. So what we were planning on doing was having, um, a.
Nostalgia night.
Yes, a Select Board meeting up there, Thursday, that Thursday night, um, December fourth, I believe it is.
No, I guess it's the tenth.
And then, I mean, I don't know what the plan is or what the timing is for the plan for that. They're gonna repurpose it.
Okay.
And use it in the building somewhere else. They're just gonna move it.
Oh, they're just gonna move it? So it's actually being.
Dismantled.
Removed, dismantled, they're putting it someplace.
There was a proposition to make the front part, I believe it was, a table.
Yeah.
To be left in the Old Town Hall.
My question is, have you done the research on the historical value of that being done? And would that affect the, uh, certification of it being a historical site?
I don't think that's a historical site, is it?
Well, it's in the.
It's within the historical district.
District, but not a historical building.
That's the outside. Well, I've talked with the Historical Society already.
What about the State of Maine? I think you have to, you ha- you have to talk to the State of Maine Historical. Okay.
We'll look into that, Sherri, then.
I really, I really want to make sure that, you know, it's the preservation, okay? So when you start moving things around, you're losing that preservation.
Yeah, the question about that too, when, was brought up when we were doing the foundation, elevators, outdoor stuff, I thought that was brought up before and handled.
Yes.
Cause the foundation's new, we have new windows going in.
Yeah, there was a committee, there was a, there was a, a committee that worked really hard.
Yeah.
At, at, um, in helping preserve that building.
Yeah. So I thought by putting like the stuff on the outside, the generator, the gas.
That's.
I know, attached to the building, I thought if it was attached to the building, it didn't make it historical, my, I don't know if I'm wrong or not. If we were to attach something to an historical building, would break laws, or some historical.
We can check.
That's why, that's why I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Doing that for the Old Town Hall, because I thought we weren't.
I am concerned.
Yeah.
Okay? And I, I really would like to see the forethought of this, you know, who, there's a plaque in the town hall, Old Town Hall, okay, certifying everything. So I really want it to be researched, so we're not making a mistake.
Okay.
Because there were a lot of people beforehand that worked really hard at getting the historical district and everything done.
Yep, and I think that's why we talked about it last time, about reaching out to the Historical Society, maybe taking the, the particular item, so.
So I'm glad your meeting lasted a little longer because I, I ran up from work. So.
Well, we know EcoMaine was coming today.
So I, that's, that was something that I really.
If we can have people as passionate as you in recycling, we'd be doing great.
I do recycle, believe me.
We need more of you. But, yeah.
Thank you very much, Sherri.
Yeah, and I, and I'd like to have it, you know, be able to listen to it at, from a meeting of what you found out.
Okay, yep.
But I think you have to go beyond our Historical Society to ask those types of questions.
Yeah.
Okay, not, not saying that they don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that we, we just really want to take caution when you're talking about a historical building, district, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay?
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just put Madison on hold.
Yeah. We shall.
Anything else? No? Good. Okay. Oh, the ending, oh, that's on David.
Notifications.
Yay, notifications. Uh, again, the Select Board will be hosting a meeting with representatives from the towns um, in the Saukby Valley region, uh, to discuss improving regional EMS services on November twenty-fourth at six P M. Uh, there will be no public comments at this meeting, but just to be aware that we, as a board, will be here on the twenty-fourth, which is Monday. Um, I believe the building will be open, but we won't be having public comments, so. Um, also, this Friday, tomorrow, right, we're all gonna be together at Moamamieo, um, to go over with the Rec Director in a tree trimming service about clear.
Forester.
A forester, about clear cutting parts of, uh, the Moamamieo.
No, we're not clear cutting. There's no clear cutting. That's, yeah, yeah. It's selective cutting.
Selective cutting, yeah.
For the dangerous trees around Moamamieo. There's trees that.
Yeah.
It's, we're doing a walkthrough to see what needs to be removed, so. Yes, it's a professional, it's a, the, the forester, so. Yep. Yeah, it's a professional, it's, we're not just picking and choosing. So.
It wasn't on here, I was shooting off the hip on that one. Uh, the December fourth Select Board meeting will be held. We're gonna have to postpone this, I think. Um, we were gonna have it December fourth at the Old Town Hall, unless we wanna continue doing that.
No, we can do it. It's not a fact of, we're not removing nothing. We still be, we wanna host an old style with a lot of the townsfolk that may wanna come and reminisce in an old town meeting. It'll be in that layout. For me, that's not been around, it'd be pretty cool, so.
All right, so we'll stay on December fourth then. Uh, Select Board office hours are Thursday, two to eight, and on-air meetings are at seven. Station, uh, transfer station hours are Saturday and Sunday from nine A M. to four P M., and Wednesday, twelve to four. A transfer station sticker must be attached to your vehicle windshield for the disposal of all items. Transfer station stickers are available at the town office for twenty dollars. No stickers required to use the swap shop. The transfer station does not accept brush, yard clippings, or hazardous waste. Riverside Recycling in Portland takes hazardous waste. Uh, again, a friendly reminder to all residents that building waste, furniture, and mattresses should not be left at the curbside. Uh, we have a transfer station for those items also. Um, I also did notice on Route twenty-five, in one of the pullouts, someone's starting to dump stuff there. So we might have to reach out to, um.
Yes.
D O T.
I did see that, an old purple desk.
Yep. Uh, general assistance applications are available at the town office during normal business hours. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with supporting documentation, and must be signed and returned to the G A Administrator or town clerk. Uh, planning board meetings at the municipal complex, the first and third Monday evenings of the month at seven P M.
Thank you. And a reminder?
Recycle.
Yes, yes, recycle, please. Increase your recycling. Uh, but next Thursday is Thanksgiving.
Next Thursday is Thanksgiving, and we are closed.
We are closed, the whole town building, office, clerk.
Thursday and Friday.
Yeah.
Thursday and Friday.
And today is tax day? Stay the last day? Stay the deadline for payment two?
Uh, tax bills? Yep, November payment, these two.
So, yeah, I think that's, I think that's it.
Thank you, EcoMaine.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, EcoMaine. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Owen.
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second? We are adjourned at eight twenty-six.
All in favor? Oh, I didn't, we didn't, it was just you.
I'm like, I'm looking, I'm looking. Thank you very much, everyone.